Manager Mermis has received the letter of the items that are waiting. Some approvals have already been given, so it looks like we're moving and according to the gentleman at IDOT, by March 1st, we should be concluded. The manager just reminded me that ACOM will not be billing over the amount of grant money, so there's no fear of using any city funds as well.
Can I ask you one question, Mayor?
Yes.
On the response that you got from IDOT, are they waiving the tree survey and all that to move it to Phase 2? Because that was a concern that we had and that was...
That's going to be part of it, yes. Sounds like that's going to happen. Alderman Winger.
Well, some of that could be necessary for the future of our community. That I was at a conference and learned that some of the planning is cohesive with other areas of Wooddale. So some of it, the bike trails and the planning of the paths, you want a product that will fit in as communities build around us. So now you're concerning me if they're not going to do those things that they're looking to do.
They will be done. Actually, one of the things here, the bike pedestrian plan to meet complete the street state law mandate approved by IDOT District 1, awaiting approval from IDOT Central Office. And the other one was the tree inventory and... Sorry. With the streets, they wanted another study. I should have brought my notes. It's all going to be taken care of in the next phase. So we're not going to hold up the first phase to do these items.
Okay, so they will be done though in the future?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes my report, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the council knows, one of their strategic priorities that they wanted to place emphasis on was collaborative efforts with other governmental entities, especially those within the city of Wooddale. A meeting has been scheduled for later this month to discuss those opportunities and our staff will be giving an update, which will be forthcoming after that meeting. My second item, I'm going to defer to Al Stefan for a brief engineer's report.
Mr. Stefan.
Just wanted to give a brief update on some of the status of some of the reports. We have, I've been able to compile a list of all the projects that we are pursuing grant funding for. I will be emailing that over to everyone today. I was not able to print it out today due to some scheduling conflicts, but I will be forwarding that out. There are a series of grants that we have been and are continuing to pursue and that will be forthcoming. In addition, we have been in contact with IDOT regarding the Irving Park Bridge lighting project. I know that is of some concern. I do have the reference number for you today and we put a schedule together to get that project wrapped up. And in addition, there was a Stormwater Committee meeting last night. I think it went fairly well. I would assume Alderman Shockey may discuss that a little bit later. Are there any questions?
Next is the consent agenda. We have five items on the consent agenda. If no objections, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second? Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
That passes. Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve the items on the agenda. One, resolution extending the agreement between the City of Wooddale and Wolf &amp; Company for financial auditing services. Two, resolution adopting the paste, drug, and alcohol testing policy revisions. Number three, approval of work order awarded to Baxter &amp; Woodman for design, construction, engineering services for Sunnyside, Prospect, Charmille, and Central Avenue for water main replacements in the not-to-exceed amount of $64,000. Number four, a resolution seeking to approve an agreement providing for consulting engineering services with Baxter &amp; Woodman. Number five, a resolution approving and ratifying the agreement between the City of Wooddale and H.R. Green Incorporated for professional engineering services related to the North wastewater treatment plant upgrades. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
That passes. Next, committee chairman reports, planning and zoning, Alderman Winger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance prohibiting the use of groundwater as a potable water supply by the installation or use of potable water supply wells or by any other method in a designated area of the city of Wooddale, Illinois.
That is your motion?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Questions? Alderman Wesley.
Questions? Maybe it's a legal question. I was under pressure and this ordinance that is in front of us that we can't do it citywide for all our gas stations. Am I correct, Mr. Bond?
Mr. Bond. You do it on a station-by-station basis. It's generally initiated by the property owner. This is a situation where usually what happens, this is fairly common in other communities where you've got a lot of old abandoned gas stations that are going to be used for redevelopment purposes and you want to restrict any contaminants that may have leached into and to adjacent properties. And usually it comes at the request of the property owner because of the IEPA has notified them that there is in fact an issue. This is one of the situations where they have not. This is kind of a prophylactic type of a measure where they're doing it. They want to just make sure that in the event there is any redevelopment, that there's no ability for anybody to do any of the drilling. Our code currently does not allow for the drilling of the wells for a potable water supply. So this is really kind of a belt-and-suspenders protection for the city because now we can regulate it, whereas before it's regulated, but still regulated by the IEPA, but we didn't have specific authority with respect to this property. Now we can find people if they do anything on that property where they are using that other than our water system, so that's what they'd be using.
You have a follow-up?
Yeah, I have a follow-up. The concern I have here, and you hit it head-on, no one in that area could redrill a well regardless.
Correct.
Okay. My concern is why this is coming forward. Is there any idea? What is the concern? First off, we never should have this brought to us because if I am mistaken, we did not ask for it to go for ordinance at all in our last committee. The point that I have here is there's a lot of questions that still need to be answered here. There's an ice jam that's going up over by that area now by the sidewalk that, okay. Now, and then I really think, I found out yesterday, that there's stuff bubbling up by one of their pumps. I have a major concern that there may be a leak somewhere in that property and they have not. And I would ask is that they submit, before I even consider voting this, I would like them to test their tanks and prove to us that there aren't no leaks in the area or else we're going to be in the same boat that we were in with the Clark Gas Station years ago where Christie's parking lot was and there was a leak there. My concern is all of a sudden these are coming to light now and it's pretty funny that this business guy at Shell want to do this. So I don't feel comfortable passing this until I have those answers, if the tank's been tested because there's been talks already from several people that one of their pumps' areas bubbles up from the concrete. I have a concern that there's a leak there and once a rain hits, it's bubbling up their fuel. I'm not for sure. I just don't feel comfortable with passing this and I know what you're going to say. The tanks are in concrete.
Mr. Bond.
That's true. That wasn't what I was going to say, but that is a true point. No, John Forrest actually checked with the EPA. There is no pending EPA remediation. Those tanks have to be tested pursuant to the EPA guidelines. The city has no legal authority to mandate the testing of the tanks. I will tell you, we've done this in other communities for Shell. My understanding is the Shell Corporation, you know, maybe they're looking at revising or remodeling stations down the road or, you know, at some point in time, looking for other uses for the property. I don't know, but this is a matter that came to us. John looked at it, saw that there was nothing at the EPA level. There are no current violations. There's nothing wrong with the tanks. The tanks have been tested and the IEPA has found no defects with the tanks. All this does is prevents any drilling, which again, as you indicated, Alderman Wesley, our code doesn't allow. It prevents the drilling of any wells for purposes and potable water is defined as water for human consumption, drinking, bathing, swimming, washing dishes, or preparing foods. That's what the definition, legal definition of potable water. So there is no risk, no harm to the city and in fact, it gives you an additional regulatory armed for enforcement purposes where you would otherwise not have that ability because that's wholly within the purview of the IEPA. So this is actually something that empowers the city to have control over those, over that property that you would not otherwise have.
Alderman Shockey.
Couple of concerns. First of all, why so far north? Why is it going up past East Commercial if they're worried about, I don't know what they're worried about, and that's what scares me. Why are they going that far north? Secondly, we're going to be working on this area with the H.R. Green to straighten out this problems we have with the turn signals and everything else and that's in that same area. Now, the feeling I have is all of a sudden they pop up with this and it's going to do something to stop us from working in the future. I just don't see the need for it. As long as Alderman Wesley said, we have a thing that you can't drill for potable water at, you know, anywhere. Why do we have to have something special? Why so large? Why that whole area is going to be changed? I mean, it even includes where we have the movies in the park and the carnival and so forth and goes all the way up to the stores up on north of Commercial Street. It's just too big of an area. It doesn't go south that far. It only goes to Division Street, but it just doesn't make any sense. And I would, I personally will not vote for it until I am completely satisfied that this is on the legit, that we're not going to be bitten the butt in the future on it.
Well, the only thing I can assure you is, right now, you cannot drill a well for potable water supply under our code. What this does is it gives the city the ability to enforce that by fine and there's a provision in there up to $750 for each violation if anybody violates this ordinance. And so you've got penalties set forth in this particular ordinance. And again, what it does is it specifies restriction that already exists in our code. It does not in any way restrict the ability for us to do street improvements or anything in right-of-way's or for even a property owner to do development adjacent to that. They simply are prohibited from drilling a well for a potable water supply. That's the only restriction that this imposes. And again, this is a restriction that is currently found in our city code. The purpose of it is to make sure that, you know, nobody is using that water for drinking purposes anywhere in that area through the use of a well.
Alderman Shockey.
It's double. I don't understand why you have to have the same ordinance and a special for this area. Number one, do we have penalties now for people drilling a well in town?
Mr. Bond.
We do have a provision in our code that prohibits the drilling of a well. If somebody's coming in, they have to hook up to our water system now.
Then why don't we just extend that to include this? Why do we have something special just for Shell? And are we going to have all the gas stations coming in and asking for this? Is this something from the future or... I just don't understand.
Mr. Bond.
Yeah, this has been going on now for probably the last 10 years or so, but again, generally when it comes to you, it's because the EPA has, they've gone in for either an expansion or some type of development. The EPA has found some levels, while they're acceptable levels of contaminants, they found some levels and they just want to make sure that those are not making their way into the potable water supply. And that is not the case because there's nothing pending with respect to this particular property and I've seen it from Shell and other communities we represent and I think there may be some corporate philosophy that, you know, they want to be, you know, good neighbors and they want to make sure that there is no, there's no possibility of any contaminants whatsoever entering into the water supply.
Alderman Woods.
Yeah, there's more to the ordinance than drilling the well. And as far as this being something that's done all the time, if you go to their site, this process started in 97 and since that time, 33 people have applied. 12 of them rejected. So only 21 have actually gotten these ordinances through. In part, what it does, it's not to double penalize somebody who's going to try to drill a well because nobody's going to come in here and try to drill a well in their backyard. It helps the gas stations, relieves them of some responsibility of mitigating any or increasing the cost of mitigating the property due to polluted ground. Due to the term institutional control gives them a, let's say, a firewall of protection being, if nobody can drink water from the ground, there are no wells, then there's really no reason to clean up the ground to a greater extent than is necessary. So that's really the purpose and intent of these ordinances. So I for one, unless somebody comes in here typically, I mean, I don't even know who's really applying for this. Is it the owner of the tanks? Is it Shell Corporation in general? And to Alderman Shockey's question, will all the other gas stations be coming in? Yes, because it's going to save them money in the long run. So it is something that they'll want to get through and I for one would have to vote against it.
Do I respond? Mr. Bond.
Yeah, I don't disagree with your assessment. I think what the gas stations are doing is there, if there are wells and there were to be some kind of an incident, those wells would become contaminated. It would be the responsibility on the EPA guidelines that the gas stations come in and make those cleanups. If there are no wells, there's nothing for them to clean up in the future. So there is a benefit to them. From the city's standpoint though, we're not allowing it. It's prohibited period, so that never is a possibility. It's prohibited under our current ordinance and by doing this, there's absolutely no way, and if somebody does, they're going to be subject to penalties under the existing penalties and they'll be in violation specifically of this ordinance because the term person is any individual partnership, firm, company, da-da-da, goes on, of any entity who drills or impairs the potable water system. So it gives us a pretty broad protection. And again, is there a benefit? Certainly, they're not coming forward with it if there's no benefit to the gas stations, but generally it would come in a situation where there is a leak or there is some kind of a situation that they're trying to remediate and in this instance, that is not the case. And again, it's a belt-and-suspenders, in our legal opinion, a belt-and-suspenders to protect the city and its residents. It does, no question, provide a benefit in the future potentially to the gas station because if there's no well there, there's no well to be contaminated if there were to be an incident. If there is an incident, make no mistake about it, the gas station's obligated under the EPA guidelines to clean it up. So if one of those tanks were to fail, whether it's on their property, on someone else's property, the EPA requires those, the gas station is solely responsible for the cost of those cleanups.
Right, but to a different extent with or without this ordinance. And also, the US EPA has just come out with a five-year study they completed, which covers these ordinances. I didn't get to read through it. I just got it yesterday. It was 64 pages. It's pretty technical and it's a complete study of, you know, how effective these are and, you know, really are they necessary and are they just being used as a firewall to protect the gas station from doing their job? I'm not saying that they're not. I'm just saying, going back to exactly what Alderman Shockey said, you know, we already can't drill a well. If you want to double the fine, double the fine. There's obviously a benefit to the gas station. I don't see any representative from here. I don't see an engineer as anybody typically. Other communities have tested the grounds where they've shadowed them in this map that you've given us to cover the ordinance and none of that's done. And then you get into taco tier one, tier two, tier three. It's pretty technical. So again, I have a lot of reservation and would need some more information for it to be able to vote for this.
Mr. Bond.
Yeah, the only thing I would respond is that the EPA has tested and has found that there are no contaminants on the property or adjacent to the property. So it is a firewall, no question, and that's why I said it's sort of an extra layer, you know, you essentially are doubling the fines and I agree that they're not agreeing to double the fines unless there's some potential benefit. And the only, the benefit to them essentially is by virtue of the fact that there are no wells, and they can't be built under our ordinance anyway, if there are no wells, there's nothing that could potentially even be contaminated to affect the water supply down the road.
Well, one other thing too, from the city side, we have to track these things too, you know? So that's another commitment on our part to keep track of. Right now, it's only one, but I'm sure that the rest of the gas stations are going to come in and we're going to have to have a system in place to track these pieces of property to make sure nobody drills a well or does anything. I mean, there's other legal obligations that extend to us and continue on, you know? I'm just, you know, it's a lot to digest. Thanks.
Alderman Winger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's, history of this is important to understand as well. So in conversation with the Planning, Zoning, and Building Director, Mr. Forrest, last month when I was talking with him, my understanding is this was preempted by when Shell applied for the permit to do the work on that site and the residence as well as, a lot of us have probably observed that about a year ago or so when they were doing their work there. EPA gets notified and this is their process of now making this, trying to push this ordinance in place to protect the citizens that surround that gas station. So therefore, EPA is requesting this and that's one of the reasons why I feel it's important and noteworthy to address. So that's how I understand it came about and Mr. Mermis, correct me if I'm wrong or straighten me out if I, you know, misstated something.
I spoke to Mr. Forrest right before the meeting, unfortunately. He's sick and couldn't be here, but he did say that exactly.
Mr. Alderman Shockey.
Couple of things. Why the area of the map? Why so far north? Who made this map up? Did we do it? Did Shell do it? Did the corporate, who?
Mr. Bond.
It's my understanding that Shell did this in conjunction with the IEPA.
And why so far north? What doesn't make any logic, there's no logic to going that far north. You're talking about hundreds and hundreds of feet and only a small amount south of it. And that's number one. Number two, this, whatever it is bubbling up from the sidewalk, we have, I think we have to find out what that is, why it's happening. It's not runoff from the roof like they claim, but I have no idea what it is. And my thought is to just take and table this for the time being until we can come up with more answers for it because right now, it just looks like to me like one of those things that are going to bite us in the butt in the future. So I make a motion to table.
Roll call, please.
I have a question, if you don't mind.
Gregory?
Just on the question, I have a chance to ask a question, right?
Yes, go ahead.
The, since the IEPA is the one requesting it, what are we going to do? Say we're not going to pursue this and say, "Too bad"? I mean, is that what we do? Doesn't sound right, but that's my question.
In all my reading, I've never seen where the IEPA requested this as an ordinance. This is not a request from the IEPA. This is a vehicle used by petroleum companies, corporations, gas station owners, dry cleaners, other people that would be involved in sites that pollute the ground or groundwater.
Mr. Bond.
That's correct. The Shell, in conjunction with the IEPA, Shell's the one making the request. The IEPA encourages these types of ordinances because it gives, again, an extra layer of protection against any contaminants making their way into the system. But the request is technically coming from the Shell gas station.
And then we just tell them no?
Well, I'm not sure what the ultimate is going to be, but it's being tabled for additional information, so maybe an ultimate no, but at least right now, it sounds like perhaps just more information.
Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
What, what?
Motion to table.
Table it? Okay.
To the next committee.
The next committee.
Next committee?
That's fine.
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution in approving the City of Wooddale flood-prone property acquisition policies and procedures.
Second.
Any question? Alderman Wesley.
Again, I'll add my concern again with the property. It seems like in this area that we're passing is, some of those areas not even counted in. It seems like it's mainly the Saw Creek right away here and all that other stuff. I thought we were going to do some wording or tweaking this of the local outside of Saw Creek. Well, how far are we going outside Saw Creek? Are we submitting a paperwork of every flooded house that comes aboard? Are they going to be part of this policy? I mean, I have some in the fourth ward, we have some in the first ward. You know, I have along Saw Creek, but I also have some out of Saw Creek that floods out all the time too. I mean, this does not satisfy me that you need to do some more tweaking on this. That's all I'm saying.
And before I, this part of the discussion last week was, and the first page, first, the second, whereas, either by itself or in conjunction, I thought, so are we saying that we're going to purchase properties by ourselves now? That, you know, that's still in there. And on the next page, citywide, City of Wooddale flood-prone property acquisition policies and procedures, the City of Wooddale may be wholly responsible for a purchase of this type in the flood-prone of, I mean, I thought that was going to be taken out. Mr. Bond.
Yeah, it was my understanding, this just gives you, let's say, for example, you have no partners in this and the property is, for all practical purposes, a bargain. I mean, you can, you get it for a very small price. If you didn't have that in there, you would be foreclosed and precluded from acquiring that property. So this gives you the ability, if you want to, I think the thrust of it was you were going to do it in conjunction with another partnership with a federal, state, or county agency. I know we've done it with the county and with the Forest Reserve in the past, but by having that there, it simply gives you the ability, if you want to, acquire a certain parcel of property because it's either so critically important and no one else is interested in financially participating, or it's so financially attractive that you want to be able to take advantage of it. If you come across a property like that and you don't have that language in the ordinance or in your policy, you're precluded, you cannot acquire that property. You'd have to come back and amend your policy. So this just gives you a little bit additional flexibility.
Do we have other questions? Mr. Mermis.
Going back to what Alderman Wesley had questioned, his first question, category B covers properties away from the creek that may have flooding issues and then it goes into items one, two, and three about how to categorize those properties. So those properties are in there.
But my other concern was, and I have it, I... My other concern was exactly what the mayor suggested, too, that it was a highlighted mine, too. And I, you know, so I'm almost ready to table this one until those changes are done.
Mr. Bond.
Well, if you want that, both in the policy and in the resolution, you can simply strike that. It's authorized in conjunction with federal and state authorities to acquire. So you could just delete either by itself in the second recital or whereas on the, the resolution. And you could strike the provision on the, on the policy itself on the bottom of the first page. If, if that's the pleasure of the, of the council. Again, it gives you just a little additional flexibility if you have it in there. It doesn't mandate that that be a considered, one of the priorities is for you to do it on your own. In fact, the priority is to do it in conjunction with some state or federal authority to acquire it. But it, it would give you at least the flexibility in that unique situation where you, as a council, said, we think this property otherwise satisfies our procedures and it satisfies our, the priority that we put to these in rating the properties. And we'd like to acquire it. And the state is broke and the feds aren't coming up with any money and the county isn't, isn't going to participate. It would give you the ability to acquire that property, but it doesn't mandate or make you obligated to buy that.
Alderman Shocky.
The trouble I have is the last sentence. The City of Wooddale may be wholly responsible for a purchase of this type. In the past, we've had lawsuits and the legalese language that is thrown around, I don't know what that may be means. Does it mean we're going to have to? Does it mean we don't? Every, you know, every time we have something like this, it seems to come up with a different answer. And I just would like to toss that last sentence out.
Mr. Bond.
I'll explain what that means. The city, all that means is that it's permissible. The word may is, is permissible. The city is permitted to acquire it. You're not mandated or obligated. You cannot be compelled. A property owner cannot say, I satisfy all the other criteria, with the exception of the fact that there's no state or federal funding assistance. You, the city, are obligated by my property. They could not do that under this, under this language. This is permissible only to you, as a city council, to utilize. If it's the pleasure of the, of the council, that sentence can simply be stricken on a motion to amend. If there's a, a motion to amend the motion on the floor, you could strike that provision and the similar one in the second recital, if that's.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Wait. Who was the, who was the first, who made the motion, the first?
Oh, that's true. So, so then I agree with the.
You accept, for the, you accept the amendment?
Yes.
And the second there was? And you accept. Well, actually, Art still has a, Mr. Art, Mr. Woods.
I'm not quite sure what we're talking about now.
You're discussing now, you're, if you have any discussion on the amendment to the motion, and that is striking the phrase, the City of Wooddale may be wholly responsible for a purchase of this type on the policy itself, and striking the phrase either on the second recital or whereas on the resolution, either by itself or in, and just put in conjunction with.
Okay. Well, originally, before that motion was made, I was going to actually concur with city attorney on this, this one. But going, going back to what you said, may be wholly responsible. And this goes to Alderman Wesley's concern. If you get a property that's outside that floodway or floodplain, there's never ever going to be any grant money to buy an interior lot away from the creek. That might ultimately be our only avenue or recourse in some cases or event. It no way obligates us to buy a piece of property anywhere. I, I thought we did a pretty good job. I, I talked to John. I talked to Jeff. We went through this. Some things we took out. And the, the idea was that to just have a general idea of what we would do when, when we did get money or funds and how we would prioritize what properties we would buy. The more we want to expand it to other buildings, the more you have to change the language. And this is part of the language change to cover issues that other aldermen came up with. Well, with, what about property outside that floodplain or floodway? What about those one or two properties that flood every two or three years? And this came about to address those situations. But again, in no way obligates us to buy those properties at any time or any place. I, I would prefer to go, go through with the original motion. I'll, I'll, I'll vote against the, the amend at vote motion. Thank you.
Mr. Mermis.
Alderman Woods is correct. One thing to consider, too, is if you read the sentence before the sentence that you're attempting to strike, they kind of go hand in hand. Without one, the other one probably doesn't make much sense.
And again, as Alderman Woods said, this does not obligate you to, Alderman Shocky's concern, which is a valid concern, what you don't want to do is have a property owner say, wait a minute, I satisfy all these criteria. You, the city, now are obligated to buy my property. And the city feels like they're handcuffed into making that purchase. That is simply not the case. There, this, in no way, the policy doesn't obligate you to buy any properties. It, all it does is set the policy for how you are going to evaluate those possible purchases and prioritize those. And again, if you have one that falls outside the normal realm, an interior property, as Alderman Woods said, or some other property that doesn't otherwise satisfy the criteria but creates a flooding issue, this gives you the flexibility by having that language in there without the obligation of, of acquiring the property.
Anything further? Roll call.
What is it?
This is with the amendment.
What, yeah. What's the, the motion of four?
Mr. Bond.
Motion on the floor is to amend the resolution entitled, the resolution adopting and approving City of Wooddale flood-prone property acquisition policies and procedures, to strike the provision in paragraph, in the second recital that says, the city is authorized striking either by itself or. So it would read, it would now read, the city is authorized in conjunction with federal and state authorities to acquire the property. And it would also be striking on the policy itself, which is attached as exhibit A to the resolution. It would be striking that last sentence, although I agree with Manager Mermis. The sentence before it probably doesn't make much sense without that. But the motion on the floor is to strike the last sentence on, on paragraph, sub-paragraph B, the first page that says, the City of Wooddale may be wholly responsible for the purchase of this type. So the motion you're voting on is to remove those two provisions and remove the, the city's ability to acquire property solely on its own.
I've got one question. Say we have a house that's outside of the floodway, floodplain, houses that have been flooding the last few years. And we did a, we're doing the start, the, excuse me, the drainage study, the flooding study we're doing right now. So the study comes up before we purchase this house, we can put a retention on there. Will that be allowed or will no longer be allowed because we don't pass this? Mr. Bond.
That would not be allowed unless you somehow were able to convince the, the county, the state, or the federal government to assist in the funding. If, without that language, the city is precluded from having the flexibility of being able to acquire that property.
Mr. Woods.
In, in conversation, in part, that, that's the reason that that's in there also. Your scenario is a good scenario, but probably more likely is that we'll have to buy strips of property or easements to help ease flooding or channel water in those areas where we're doing this study. So taking that out does preclude us or bind us from doing any of those little things. So again, I, I would vote against it or just say, table the thing and rewrite it. As you start stripping these contract or ordinances as they are and try to do them on the fly, they're going to, they wind up being ineffective at all levels. I mean, we thought about it. We've talked about it. And, you know, to change it on the fly like this legally, I'm not for it. Thank you.
Alderman Winger.
Yes, the motioner, I, I would be looking to strike that second sentence from the bottom of section B as well, where it says, property located outside of a recognized special flood hazard area typically is not considered eligible for the utilization of grant monies for a buyout program, if the seconder is in agreement as well.
That's fine.
Then, then that's my amendment.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Mr. Mayor, with all the conflict or conversation going on, now, I would ask that this be tabled and revisited and rewritten with input from the council, because there's too much going on here, because I cannot vote either way on this. It's too much. Go back to the drawing board, rewrite it. It's too many motions out here now. I'm lost. I'll be totally honest with you. I am totally lost with this motion. So I would ask that it be tabled to the next committee meeting to rewrite or re-tweak it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Shocky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
That's tabled.
And that concludes my report.
Mr. Bond.
Just, just by way of a comment on that, you, you will need to give staff direction. And the direction is, do you want to have that, that authority or don't you? We can put the language in, but we need to know which direction you, as a council, want to go. So it may be appropriate to have the further discussion on the policy at the committee level and make that determination. But the, the question is, do you want to have the flexibility or do you not want to have that flexibility at this moment in time? But you need to, we can wordsmith all we want, but we can't, we have to have what your wishes and desires are to get it right. So you need to come together as a council. You may not agree with unanimous consent, but you need to give direction to staff as to which of those two options you wish to pursue.
All right. Spoke to the manager and we will postpone to a committee, this item and the last item. Next week's committee meeting will be kind of short notice to get with the I E P A. So for Mr. Mermis to get us the information we need. So he'll be bringing that to us to the next possible committee when he gets the information. Next, Public Health and Safety. Alderman Coles.
I am going to put this back to committee. There's ordinance on no parking, ordinance on Oak Meadow Drive. So I want to, can I get a second on my table?
Second. Roll call. Table.
We're tableing it to committee.
Back to committee for discussion or?
For discussion, yeah.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Shocky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
That passes.
I have, that concludes my.
Your report. Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Wesley.
No report, Mayor.
Finance and Administration, Alderman Shocky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the summer of 2011, the city launched a strategic planning process. With input and support from elected officials and city staff, we identified what we do separately in our specialized areas of departmental focus and incorporation our major initiatives into one document that captures the big picture, under all the umbrella of one shared strategic vision. This plan is designed to capture our most significant goals and objectives and actions. Therefore, I make a motion to accept the resolution to adopt the plan as general policy to guide the city, the city council, the city staff on the priority of matters and issues to be addressed, investigated, considered, enacted upon in the period covered by the plan. This plan shall be deemed and construed as binding the city council, the city, or city staff as to addressing, investigating, considering, or requiring action upon any of the matters of, of issue. And this is for the years of 2013, 2014. That's my motion.
Second. Do I have a second?
Second.
And the question, Alderman Woods.
Just some clarity. The plan shall be deemed and construed as binding the city and the city council. So we have no more say. I thought the understanding that this was a, a looser guideline, not a, an edict that we have to follow verbatim.
Mr. Mermis.
It's only binding in, that's your strategy for the year until we talk about it again. There's no binding financial criteria there. So binding is a loose term in a way.
Not in this format, it's not.
Well, it's actually, it's actually binding unless and until you change it, in which case the new strategic plan would be binding.
May I add one more sentence?
Alderman Shocky.
A majority of the council may vote to amend the strategic plan or to formally alter the priorities set forth therein. I think that answers it.
Who was the second there?
I was the second.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
I'm staying.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Shocky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
concludes my report.
Next, other business? We have no other business. Next item is approval of list of bills, January 5th. Alderman Shocky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the list of bills for 1512, the general fund is $87,475.87. The road and bridge fund is $856.64. Motor fuel tax fund is $10,747.35. Tourism fund is $1,187.70. The capital projects fund is $18,450.40. The equipment replacement fund, $17,064.10. Computer parking lot fund, $1,294.67. Water and sewer, sewer capital projects, $71,276.25. And the water and sewer fund, $122,725.55. And the grants fund, $3,057.78, for a total of all funds of $334,652.31. That's my motion.
Do I have a second? Second. Questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
One question. On page 21, Springbrook Software, U.P. Cash Receipt, imported maintenance, imported maintenance. Could you?
Mr. Wilson.
Tell me what that is?
Or 15R?
The last item on a, actually, it's more, 16. Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, as a function of implementing the new online bill pay system that was approved in the budget, what, 13 months ago, this current fiscal year budget, that's a module that we can import the online payments directly into Springbrook without having to manually key them in, something that our old bill pay system didn't have the functionality to do. So like I said, as a, as a functionality of modernizing our system, this component was, was needed to facilitate that modernization. That was the 1500. The 163 and change is the annual maintenance to make sure that it keeps working properly so that they'll answer the phone and actually work on it should we call them if we have a problem. So we've been using utility billing cash module since we bought the software, but this special import module, the field layouts are proprietary to Springbrook. And unfortunately, they wouldn't release them to us. they wouldn't release them to us to do that, the new modernization program until we purchased that, that component.
So, can you, my question is, so, again, this is falling back, we were using something that worked before. Correct, and that's what I'm hearing. And now we just went ahead and spent 1,500, $1,600 to update something that was working before to Springbrook. Am I, am I wrong? You're saying the system worked before, and now we're going $1,600 to add another piece to the system?
Mr. Wilson.
Neither online bill pay system is through Springbrook. The one that we had currently was a homegrown one that we had somebody write for us, is very limited, very remedial in its application. The new one is very verbose. We're gonna soft launch it probably next week. There's a lot more functionality, it's a superior system to what we have now, and to make it work to its fullest capacity, and, yeah, we had to spend $1,500 to, to build it out the way that it should have been built out three years ago, but the cost benefit of spending the money for this back then would have probably been $6,000 or $7,000, or now is just included in the process of doing the new online bill pay system.
Is this counting the training to use that software? Or am I going to see a bill here for?
No, that's, there's no training, it's just field layouts, it's a text file we import, so it's already been done, implemented, and we're good to go.
Anything else? Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
That passes. Next, I'd like the motion to recess in the executive session for review of the official minutes and collective bargaining.
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'd like to call the city council meeting back to order. Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Coles?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Here.
Alderman Shockey?
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
That passes. Next, I'd like the motion to recess in the executive session for review of the official minutes and collective bargaining.
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'd like to call the city council meeting back to order. Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Motion passes. We have no other items to be referred, no items from information, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.